Okay, good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30 and I will call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Staff, any changes?
No changes.
Commissioners?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
I move we adopt.
I second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. The second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the February 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Staff, any changes?
No changes from staff.
Commissioners? Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I was in here.
So the third item on the agenda is a Transit Oriented Development Zoning Ordinance, and it will be presented by Ms. Gross.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. For this item, as you are aware, the, we have a consultant that's preparing this Transit Oriented Development Ordinance. It's fairly complex, and there are additional items. One of the things that we had wanted them to do or thought that would be a good thing before we actually come before you for a public hearing would be to take a couple of projects that actually have developed there and then look at how, you know, the ordinance works, just to make sure that, you know, things make sense and we're not missing something or whatever. And there are a couple of items that staff is still looking into as well. So their request is, this was published for a public hearing tonight, but we're not ready to have this, so the staff recommendation is for Planning Commission to table this. That basically will just mean that before this can come back to again, we have to republish it and go through the standard process.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Do we need a public hearing on that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table this until it's ready for staff to bring back.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries to table the item. All right. So item four is to hold a public hearing for the Transit Inc. for rezoning from I-3 PUD to I-3 Office and Industrial Park Conditional Use Permit Amendment to allow multiple existing buildings on one lot and open storage for buses. Preliminary and final plat of a one-lot industrial subdivision of Transit Team Edition at 14420 County Road 5, presented by Ms. Gross.
Thank you, members of the commission and folks who are here this evening. Just like to introduce, we do have Pat Mason, who is here from Ames Construction, and then also Michael Richter with Transit Team Inc., and they would like to address Planning Commission tonight after our presentation and your questions of staff. So the public hearing this evening involves three different items. One is basically to remove a planned unit development from part of the subject site, and that is, we'll go through that, but that's primarily the rezoning. There was a PUD that was established in 2004 and has been amended a couple of times. Their request is to remove that PUD approval, so that's the rezoning. So the entire site then, which is about 29 acres, would have the same I-3 Office Industrial Park zoning. Then the second item is a Conditional Use Permit Amendment, and that is to do a couple of things. One is to allow for open storage of buses because the applicant, Transit Team Inc., that's their business. And then, in addition to that, there are several existing buildings on the property that are all legal, non-conforming buildings. So basically, with the Conditional Use Permit, you could have multiple buildings on a lot, and they're proposing to plat everything into one lot, so that would kind of memorialize the existing buildings. And then, in addition to the open storage for the buses, they are looking at also the ability to have new dealer car inventory stored on the property as well. And then there's the preliminary and final plat of Transit Team Edition, and that's just replating the six parcels that comprise the property into one lot. So the subject site on the map to the left is all in pink. You can see where the six different parcels are. The site abuts County Road 5, or County Road 5 is on the east part of the site, and some of the things that we will be talking about are the access points. And so the site can be accessed from Ames Drive to the north. They also have an existing driveway that is in this location, which is, I believe that's Summit Shores, and that's an access. And then there's another driveway, and I'll pull up a, 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 but you can barely see it here. There's another driveway, it's a private easement that was provided a number of years ago from Ames, which allows vehicles to access the shopping center subject site from the north. So those are the three access points. There are no accesses currently on South Cross Drive. And then what this is, this is called a near map. It's some capability that we have, and it really is just up-to, up-to-date aerial photography. It's available through Dakota County, but just to give you an idea of what the existing conditions are on the property. And the site that's aimed, or Ames Construction, is this piece here on the left, and this is the Patricia Park site where the PUD rezoning is requested. So this is the only platted lot, and this is also the plat that has the PUD zoning, which is requested to be removed. Then Ames also owns everything basically down to the South Cross Convenience Center and back up to Ames Drive and through here. This is the waste management site. At one point in time, the waste management property and this Patricia Park lot to the west were all under one ownership, and the PUD that we're talking about removing kind of originated back in the day when both of these properties were one, owned by one individual, even before they were planted. So that's the subject site, and you can see Ames has for years and years had outdoor storage on the site. They've operated at this site since the 1950s, 60s, one of the first businesses in the community. They're a community benefactor, as you are aware, and lots of construction activities, and this is a very heavy industrial site and has always been so. They do also have existing unpaved surface that's been used for storage again for, for years and years and years. There are three different buildings on the site. There's the office building here. There was an addition for maintenance type facility here, but it's all connected. Then there is this facility, which is like the service facility where they do repairs and things on vehicles and equipment. And then there is also a storage building in this location down here. Not sure what exactly this was, but it doesn't show up on the ALTA survey that was provided, so. And then this site really is vacant, with the exception of the gravel storage lot. There are no buildings on that particular site. So as I indicated, for the rezoning aspect of this, we're just looking at rezoning this one lot. It's about 10 acres, so it's a good third or more of the entire 29-acre site, so it's a very large site. This has the planned unit development over it, and on the right, what I want to show you is this is where this Patricia Park lot is. That just shows that it's I-3 planned unit development, and then the waste management property also has the same I-3 planned unit development zoning. Another aspect of this is that we've got Early Lake, which is actually across County Road 5 from the subject site, and land within 1,000 feet of Early Lake. Naturally, all the lakes in Burnsville is in a shoreland district, and that's what this kind of maroon line shows that goes around through here. So a little bit more than a third of the site is actually within that shoreland district boundary, and that's where we have some different standards that relate to impervious surface and whatnot that I'll discuss in a moment here. So this is just an overview, gives you all six parcels. The only lot that's platted is the Patricia Park lot here. All of these other parcels are not platted, and having them platted is a benefit for the community. What will result with the plat is that there will be over 1.4 acres that ultimately gets dedicated to both the city and Dakota County for right-of-way and easements, so they are losing, there's a substantial amount of property dedication associated with the plat. Terms of the PUD history, this is included in your background. Just briefly, we had quality waste, PUD that dates back to 1992. They have refuse trucks out there. They have converted their trucks to natural gas, but still heavy trucking. They store dumpsters. For a period of time, they had portable toilets out there. It's very heavy industrial type use, and it really is very comparable to Ames, except that Ames, their property is used for construction, equipment and construction management for all of their bridge, bridge projects and road projects. So both very similar types of uses, a little bit different type of things stored on the properties. In 2004, the PUD was amended, and that's for the Patricia Park site, that west 10 acres. And primarily what we're dealing with with the PUD is that they were allowed to use a gravel surface for their storage area. The ordinance requires outdoor storage areas to be paved. We have a couple of situations in the city where we have heavy industrial equipment that would rip up paving, so they have been granted either a PUD or a Conditional Use Permit to have a gravel surface, just because there's no sense in having a paved surface if that heavy equipment's going to be ripping that up. So that's basically allowing them to have the interim or temporary gravel outdoor storage area. They had a height limit to store materials up to 10 feet in height, and then there was the idea that on that Patricia Park lot, there would be a building constructed at some point in time. So that was included in that early 2004 PUD. In 2011, the PUD was amended, and that was foreseen back in 2004, basically allowing a further extension for another four years of the outdoor storage use. And again, that allowed outdoor storage, but it allowed additional outdoor storage. The 2004 PUD just allowed it on the north part, about four acres of that Patricia Park lot. In 2011, that was expanded to the entire lot, and that's what you see when we look at the aerial photos. The storage height was increased to allow that to go up to 16 feet, and then basically they still looked at, you know, we'd like to have a building out here. And in fact, Ames has provided annual reports back to the city on the status of this building. Well, in 2016, as it came around, I had worked with Pat, and, you know, they had just come to the, to the point that we're not going to construct another building out here. So they asked for a PUD amendment, and what we did in this PUD amendment, rather than having all of these year, you know, year timelines for things to occur, we just said, okay, let's just remove that and allow the storage until these certain conditions happen. And that's what was outlined in the, in the terms of that agreement. So that's what we're dealing with in, in starting with this site. So for the Conditional Use Permit, they're looking at bus storage, and they work with, basically, they have contracts with Metro Mobility, so they provide paratransit-type bus services that go along with that. These are the smaller buses generally, so we're not talking major coach buses or school buses. These smaller buses, and what they would like to do is they are able to move into the site pretty much as is. It's a really good fit for a different company. Ames is interested in selling the property. Metro, excuse me, Transit Team is interested in purchasing, and it works out really well. They both do dispatching of, you know, vehicles and things. It's just different. Either you're dealing with construction vehicles or buses in this case, so it fits well. What they have shown on their site plan, which is also the preliminary plat, is basically a restriping of this pavement area that's south of the buildings, and they are looking at having outdoor storage for buses occur primarily in these locations, and larger areas have been, are proposed to be striped to accommodate those buses. And then in addition to that, they also have parking in several locations that is primarily existing, but some new additional parking for the existing office buildings, et cetera. So what they're looking at in Phase 1 is really to be able to move in as soon as possible and be up and running, like by the beginning of July, with their first paratransit contract. And they're looking at to have approximately 130 buses available with that first contract. Then the area to the south, at some point in time, they don't know the specific time on this, think it could be within the next couple of years or five years, they would like to expand that operation, have the ability to have additional bus, buses stored in that location. In addition to that, they also would like to be able to store new auto inventory, and in our ordinance, we do allow new dealership inventory to be stored, and we have a permit process for that. It's a temporary permit, and they get that on, they can apply annually for that permit, but it's limited to dealerships within the city, and the applicant has other dealerships that they work with outside of the city. So that's why the CUP is kind of tied in for that, because they're looking for that storage that's a little bit different than what the ordinance just would permit. Then for Phase 3, if you will, this is the Patricia Park lot, and they're looking again at several possibilities out here, looking at the potential for growth for their business. And then, so that would be to have buses and new vehicle inventory stored out here. Possibility of working with the Metropolitan Council, for the Metropolitan Council, for their existing buses, once they're kind of to the end of life for their service, they get reconditioned and then they get sold. And what I had learned from the applicant today is that the actual sales of the buses would not occur at this site. They would be taken off-site and go to auctions. So in the planning report, we have a little bit more knowledge now. In the planning report, we have issues with that because sales of vehicles is not permitted at all in the I-3 district, but actually what they're contemplating, that sales would not occur on-site. So that's something that, that could be done and could fit here. Also, more area for new dealership inventory, where they may, at some point in time, divide the site and sell it to a different party. Just really depends. So at this point in time, for the purposes of the application tonight, really what we would be looking for is allowing them to do the same outdoor storage use as they're looking to do on the eastern part of the site over here, and that would be with, again, the paratransit buses and the auto dealership new vehicle inventory. In terms of the development summary, once they plat, they lose that 1.4 acres to right-of-way dedication and easements, so it's about 28 acres. They have 3% building coverage. Impervious surface coverage, although the site doesn't have actual pavement, most of it, it does have Class 5 that was installed, so that, all that area is considered impervious. So that's at about 86%. And because part of the site is within that shoreland district, the entire property is considered to be within shoreline, so there is a, the minimum standard, or standard is 30% impervious. You can go up to 75%, but you need a separate Conditional Use Permit to do that, and then usually folks work with our Natural Resources Department on how they can address water quality type improvements, water management. Their existing green space on the site is about 14% in the I-3 district, 30% would be required. And again, I just want to note, we did put these in here so that you can see where the ordinance is versus where the property is, but everything on the property is legal, non-conforming, or actually legal based on their PUD. But this is why we provide this information, so you get an idea where the ordinance is with regard to the project. Green space within the parking lot actually is higher than the ordinance standard. When you look around the buildings where they actually have the parking for the vehicles and calculate that, they have higher green space, and that's been in place for years and years. And then building perimeter landscaping, they actually would have done better, but of course, when you look at the two old buildings, the one for the maintenance, that's completely surrounded by hard surface, and then so is the, the smaller storage building to the south. So that's why they're at, at a lesser percentage for building perimeter. And in terms of site parking, I do need to clarify this for you. Existing stalls, as they exist out there today, are 72, but as the plan proposes, they actually have 94 parking spaces for, for their employees and whatnot. So the required amount of parking is 83 stalls. So with their plan, when their plan is implemented, they will have more than the ordinance requires. And really where this says proposed parking, this is really outdoor, you know, the outdoor storage, the bus storage area, and that doesn't count as parking, it's a storage type of thing, so. In terms of the issues for the project, really, because it's legal non-conforming situation, and we have just the, the one PUD, the issues really relate to, we have the site that's in the shoreline district, so we have impervious surface coverage, and then we have the overall green spaces less than, than what the ordinance would call for. This would come into play if they decide to subdivide the property after it's already platted, because when you subdivide, each of your lots or all of your lots need to meet the current ordinance requirements. So we do have some issues. We advise the applicant of that, so that they know that. They're not issues for the project right now, because everything is existing, you know, non-conforming, and they're really not proposing anything different for the site at this point. The preliminary plat, as I indicated, this is actually sideways, so area to your left would actually be turned and should be the north, and there are a couple of small encroachments that just need to be noted, and these were identified as part of the survey and also the plat. The existing sign for Ames Construction, once the county takes their right-of-way out here, their sign will be out in the right-of-way. So we've included a condition just to get something from writing from the county that they're okay with that signage. We can't require it be removed, because you get into situations of taking, so, but we can just make sure that the county is aware of it and have that. There's a small retaining wall encroachment, and this is over the common property line with the waste management property, and we did include a condition that because it will be within the easement, and then also a little bit, I think, over the property line, that the applicant work with the city engineer, and if there's an encroachment agreement that's needed, they would need to do that. If the wall is small enough, then there may not be any impacts to drainage and utilities, so it might be able to just stay there with, without any issues, but just to cover that until we have the specifics. We did include that condition. And then at this part of the site, there are existing storage racks and storage that cross the common lot line again between the Ames property and the waste management property, so these would need to be brought, make sure that they're all on the subject site. And this is just a little bit larger picture of you, if you will, for the area where we're looking at the storage of the buses and where their existing parking is available on the I talked a little bit about this driveway easement. There's a letter from Dakota County that's part of your packet, and they indicate that for this access, they are going to be looking at this as a restricted access. They will allow a permit for temporary purposes to keep that there, but they may remove it at some point in time. They indicate that if the shopping center is redeveloped into something else... They indicate that if the shopping center is redeveloped into something else, it may be removed. This is something where it's a right-in, right-out now and there are two accesses off of South Cross, so there will be access regardless, but this may at some point in the future be restricted. And we did let the property owner for, and the tenants for the shopping center, we sent that information to them just so that they would be aware of that, but have not had any information back from them. One of the items that is addressed through the engineering element of this relates to some existing easements. And when they're replating the property, they're basically just showing these same easements, but in the easement here, there are actually private utilities and we usually do not have a public drainage and utility easement over private utilities, but there are some public utilities, this easement does need to stay, but the area in red, the city engineer is requesting be vacated. We've talked to the applicant about that and that would be something that they would work out with waste management. And then the final plat is proposed. It's basically one big lot, even though all this stuff is on it, but one big lot. Then in terms of recommended conditions, we have a number of conditions that we identified. As I said, we did talk with the applicant this afternoon, both Ames and, and the applicant, and they're looking for a couple of changes which staff does not have an issue with, but what I've done is to note them in the red. Basically, number one, we're saying that the 2016 PUD remains effective until the Ames materials that are stored out there are removed. The applicant, one of the major issues that they have and that they'll be talking to you about is the restoration of the Patricia Parks, that 10-acre site, restoring that to vegetation. They would like to keep it in its current state. Something that I should address for their planning commission also is that the entire site is bounded by evergreen trees, fully mature grown evergreen trees, sometimes several trees deep and then also berm, so it is completely screened. Staff had included this, that it be restored primarily because that was a condition of earlier PUDs. Then that previous CUP conditions, and these date back to when the buildings were built a long time ago, so they remain in effect. And then because it's a PUD, we do need the property owner and applicant to agree and consent to agree, we need to put that in our findings of fact that they agree to getting rid of that PUD and those conditions. That the outdoor storage items be removed from the site prior to their final certificate of occupancy. Number five, this is one that the applicant would like to be removed and this is that the unpaved outdoor storage be decompacted and vegetated. New outdoor storage here, from a staff perspective, in talking to the applicant today, especially about the Patricia Park site, if we allow the same use there being the paratransit buses and new auto inventory, there really isn't a need to include this because this really just relates to the existing site and to the south. It doesn't include that Patricia Park. Initially, when I was putting this together because of what, the way that they had indicated they, what they wanted to do and just not being sure, it's hard from a CUP standpoint to grant a CUP and look at its mitigating conditions if you don't know what's happening there. But they know that they would like to have the opportunity for more paratransit buses and new vehicle inventory. So that's why this, we think that this could be shortened up and just by removing this part of the, this wordage, it would allow for the entire site to be used as proposed. No other storage be permitted on the property. Again, this is not needed if we deal with item six. And then the CUP, subject to filing the final plat, documentation from Dakota County that the sign is okay in their right-of-way. For new signage, they would need to get a sign permit. Eleven, the encroachments over the lot lines within easements need to be removed or an encroachment agreement be executed prior to the certificate of occupancy. And this, I think, and I didn't underline this, but we would really like this to be subject to the city engineer's approval. As I said, because I learned today that they do allow smaller retaining walls and things within the easements as long as they don't affect or impact the drainage and utility easement. Number 12, and number 12 is related to obtaining information on the number of employees working at the site and this is in order to take a look at the generation and traffic study for the property. And the applicant is willing to provide that information, but it will take, you know, a couple of weeks probably to be able to get all of that worked out together along with the traffic study. The city engineer just wanted the plat, this is a standard condition that is subject to conforming with the design and plat requirements. And then the 14 is that drainage and utility easement that covers the private utilities, requesting that to be vacated. Number 15 is then to provide the city with a copy of the actual private agreement for those utilities so that that is just on file with the city engineer. Traffic study must be completed and the applicant has agreed to do that. And then number 17, this is another item. In the report, I had indicated that there is a standard condition for outdoor storage that limits the hours of deliveries that you can make and they're limited to between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Ames has had the ability to work overnight up to 30 days per calendar year. They needed to provide the city with notice of that and then provide notification and signage on their property as well. What I had learned from the applicant is that for metro mobility, the, they usually are leaving at 6:00 in the morning, coming back at 6:00 PM, but they do have a small amount of services that may be needed 24 hours a day. So I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed with the application. I think with that, I can stand for questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Timmerman.
Excuse me. Thank you very much, very thorough. I have a couple of questions just about background a little bit. And first and foremost, I mean, the topography of the area is such that driving by, walking by with the fully mature evergreens, you can't see a thing on that site. So I, I think everything that's being proposed is reasonable and frankly incrementally improving what currently exists. My question, I guess, is a little bit more about the impact on Burnsville. Is Ames leaving the city of Burnsville? They've been such a wonderful benefactor and partner for the city. And so when I look at this, I mean, that is, that's my number one concern. So I'm just curious if, if we can have a little more background on that.
Certainly. I know that the office part that is leaving this site is moving up to, they have their Ames Business Center building that's north of 42, it's right by 42 and where the, I forget that road there, Judicial, I think. So they will be moving their offices to that site. What they're moving out of the city is the heavy construction part of it and perhaps Pat can give you some more information on that.
Okay, well, that's incredibly reassuring, thank you.
Commissioner Watt.
I'm just curious, why is this being platted as a single U-shaped lot versus two lots since the left-hand one is already platted?
I think what the applicant wants to do is, and they're, what they'd like to do is to be able to utilize the entire site. But in the event that something, you know, would occur, they could look at dividing it in the future. It's actually more beneficial for them to do it this way. If they want to divide it in the future, they can and they can do what's called a waiver of subdivision and that allows property platted, property to be divided based on a survey. So they would be able to do that. If they platted things separately now without knowing what exactly was going to happen, maybe where they need those boundaries to be, that would be a limitation for them.
Thank you.
Commissioner John.
There is a, I believe they have to use a paved surface to store the vehicles, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And would that be as a part of this as well?
Yes.
They would need to pave that area?
Yes. The existing area that they're showing for their like first phase is already paved.
Okay.
It's hard, kind of hard to see because there's dust and whatnot on it, but it is actually paved. Here is like the edge of that.
Oh, sure.
Yep. And then for, what we did for the conditions is that, yeah, if they want to do any storage in elsewhere on the property, then they would need to pave that and bring that up to the ordinance standard.
I was just wondering, can we go back to the screen with the, the list of the requirements?
The recommendations?
Yeah, recommendations, yes.
Oops.
Number five, when it says the unpaved outdoor storage area shall be decompacted and vegetated, what exactly does that mean? Are they talking about, because you mentioned before, was it class five aggregate kind of thing? That was everywhere? So are you saying that needs to be, or you're recommending it's ripped up and?
The previous PUD had looked at, yeah, basically that because of site, you know, when you use it and you're driving equipment and stuff over property for years and years, that gets compacted and it's considered to be impervious. So yeah, the intent was then to actually come back and till that up so you loosen up the soil and then just plant grass. It was not ever intended to be green space, just vegetated until such a time it's developed.
So it'd be kind of temporary and then if they did move into phase three, then they would have to pave it over?
Yes, correct.
Can you reiterate what the redlined?
Oh, yep. What I did is basically after we met with the applicant today and the property owner, the types of things that they are looking for is they definitely do not want to have to go through and decompact, you know, the area and then vegetate it. They would like to keep it as is. So I just tried to highlight the ones where there are kinds of questions or modifications that we could do to make sure that the use is available for what they would want to do with it. Like the vegetation restored, if we took that out, i-if the planning commission and council determines that that isn't needed or you, you don't want to require them to do that, then what you could do is just remove this language in the first one and then remove number five. Staff is recommending that we just allow outdoor storage for buses and new vehicle inventory as opposed to just limiting it to this because we now know that that's really what they intended for that Patricia Park site. I didn't know that at the time I wrote it.
Yeah.
Not until today, so. And if you have that, there's no need to indicate that there's no other outdoor storage because the only thing that is permitted then would be the buses and the new vehicle. I think that's it.
Your memo had stressed about that those points were, I'm sorry, drew a blank, recorded with the county. So what happens in a situation like this then? If we remove those, will it just have to be rerecorded? The new items would have to be rerecorded?
Yes, exactly. What would happen if the PUD is removed, the city council would adopt an ordinance, basically removing the PUD. And then there's also, I believe, a resolution that they adopt which rescinds all of those conditions associated with that PUD so that, and that gets recorded at the county so that there's a, you can track through time to see what, you know, what was what. And similar, the conditional use permit then would be applied to the entire site.
Okay.
With the conditions, the new conditions.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Rabbit.
I wasn't close enough.
That's okay.
There was a, I read in the notes that there was the neighbors that talked about the old business with Ames and that and there was a lot of heavy construction stuff going, noisy. I can understand all that and everything. And then there was a note in there in regards to how much reduction of that noise would actually happen with the new concept that's going in and everything. Was there anybody from the neighborhood that was getting hold of the city with a pro con? You know, a lot of times we'll have letters from people.
Yes.
We didn't have a whole lot of that, but is there?
Yep. We, I, we sent out the same number of notices that we always have in the past, so they went to all the property owners within the town home association and single family, the tenants within the existing businesses across the street, Interly Lake Office Park and the property owner, same thing with the convenience store to the south. I did get, I believe, three different calls for information on what exactly is being proposed and what are they looking at. So I sent out the plans and just indicated that the change would be from, you know, because Ames would be relocating their equipment out of sight, that we would be looking at buses and auto, new auto vehicle inventory. And with that, they were happy with the information and we've not received anything further.
No negative feedback on that? Okay, that's what I need to know, thanks.
Commissioner John.
As far as the signage, now Ames is moving out of the site, won't they be removing the sign anyhow or anyways?
I would think that there would be a different sign there, but we just need to be really careful on how we deal with, we have to be careful that we're not doing a takings, that we're not taking.
Taking property, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that was what was suggested from the, the city attorney. We can, you know, make sure that the county is aware of that. It's really their responsibility, you know, to deal with their right-of-way. And hopefully with the applicant, hopefully they would decide to do that. We can't require it.
Gotcha. Now, the right-of-way, why is that changing at all, the right-of-way portion of it?
That's a good question. I'm sure everyone would love to know that. What happens when, when you plat is that's the opportunity to get the public infrastructure, which is usually right-of-way drainage and utility easements. Sometimes there are some other things, but those are primarily what you would get. And in this case, the county has, they only have a certain, oh, shoot, I can't do it like I can do it on my computer. But what they're looking for is to have 75 feet of width from their center line and to do that, they need actually an additional 15 feet of property to be dedicated from this site. And let's see if I have a better. I hadn't drawn all those big color lines in there. Yeah, I think along, you know, if you can kind of see here along the county road, like, especially down by South Cross, you can see it, there is some land here and then there's a little additional strip here. I am almost positive that this would be right-of-way that the county has acquired over the years and/or maybe the city, but specifically when they made upgrades to South Cross and then they put in the trails and whatnot. So if they don't have to purchase those easements or that land, they can do it through dedication and that's what they do. And sometimes they will limit access, sometimes it'll be, you know, we've seen this on County Road 42, you know, usually it's, they're trying to get a certain, they have a standard width of right-of-way that they like to see based on their types of roads or highways, if you will. So they look for that whenever property is platted. City does the same thing.
It would, it would have a lot to do with the widening of County Road 5 and over time.
Exactly, yep, exactly.
There's probably some kind of.
Yep, because a lot of these, before they were ever platted, the land usually ran out to just some point, you know, kind of in the middle. And then over time, yeah, as they make improvements, they look at acquiring additional. But really plating is the only way that you can deal with those dedications for public purposes, other than just having to go out and buy piece by piece by piece from property owners who may or may not be willing to sell. who may or may not be willing to sell.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
So with that in mind, it's not going to affect their current entrance that I'm looking at right kind of in the middle, but it would do that, that other one that goes to the convenience center possibly? How does that kind of work?
This access really is not used by Ames. They provided this driveway easement to the shopping center. I tried to find, you know, I found the actual easement document, the private easement document where they did that. When I looked up the plating and when this convenience center was approved, I know initially they wanted to build a smaller, or the city intended and thought that this would be a smaller shopping center and then a bigger one was put in. I don't know, I couldn't find anything that, you know, talked about specifically this. It may have been before South Cross has been improved over the years that, you know, maybe the fire, you know, department wanted to be able to get to the site before South Cross. I don't, I just don't know. Couldn't find any, any documentation other than the actual easement itself.
But since they don't use it for their business, they don't get to keep it kind of thing? If they...
They have already, sorry about that. It's already, the easement was already provided back in the 2000s or whenever this project was developed. So to get rid of it, you would need agreement of the easement, you know, recipient also to get rid of that. And I think what's happening here too is the county is saying that they're kind of putting the world on notice by saying that this would become, you know, temporary or restricted access. If they wanted to take it away, again, you usually have to pay for that. So I think they're just identifying this through plat and kind of putting the, out there that someday, when it redevelops, the county may do that. Yeah, that's why we wanted to send that information to those property owners because otherwise they wouldn't be aware of the plat commission, you know, findings and information the applicant is and the city is, but... So I was kind of surprised not to get any responses, but we'll see, they still could do that.
Commissioner Timber, Red.
Thank you, Chair. Well, and just to follow up on what you just said, it is really surprising that we didn't get a response. Have we heard anything from those property owners in the past year, decade? I mean, that's a beautiful parcel right there. And it's ripe for redevelopment, it's in a great part of the city. I'm just shocked that they're, that they haven't participated in this conversation.
Yeah, they have had vacancies there. There is a new daycare that I believe is going through the permit process right now, so I think there'll be two daycares there. But other than, you know, permitting or interest for tenants, you know, and what they would need to go through the process, that, that's about all the extent of the contact that I've had.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:18. If there's anybody from the audience wishing to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
This is about the third time I've done this. The only person I recognize is Deb. I spent the day today with friends watching the market go down, so bear with me.
Can you please state your name and address?
My name is Doug Petri, P-E-T-R-I, and I happen to live in these... And I don't know why you don't have a display on the lectern or up here. But you're not asking, you're not asking for my opinion. But I would think it'd be easier to have something here so I could look at your drawing. Can you put up the preliminary plot up there? You had it at one time.
Yes, actually...
It was more of an overview as opposed to sectionalizing part of it.
I can...
So Ames is selling, that's my understanding of this whole thing. I... What comes to my, at first, Transit Team Incorporated. Who is that? Is that a company from Burnsville? Who can address it? Maybe they don't want to.
I think the questions would go to the Chair.
The Chair.
I'm sure that the applicant will do that, yes.
Yep, yep, so please address the Commission and then we can...
Okay, who are they?
We will ask them that. I'm sure they will come up and give a description of who they are.
I see, you don't have that information, is what you're trying to tell us.
From our understanding from what the...
And I would like to know their connection right now with the Met Council. Further, Transit Team connection. Sears has probably 2,000 cars on the east side of the shopping center. Are they part of that? Do they lease that land for that? Is that where this is going? Because I could see 20, 30 acres. You could get a thousand better cars in this property, easily, yeah. And maybe that's the justification for this. I don't know, I'm just curious. I've not heard of them and I've not seen their name, but that doesn't mean anything. You've, you've talked about the buses in the preliminary that are going to be parked. And you talked about 300 roughly, plus another 100 vehicles. And that's all going to be in that designated quadrant with the lines. It's not marked storage or future or future, right?
I can let the applicant address that. Their first is to look at about 130 stalls on the existing paved area. And where this darker striping is, that is where those bus, bus storage areas will be. They also want to have an additional about 140 or so, the ability to have more buses in this area of the site. But it'd be about the same, about the same amount. And then the rest would be available then for the new vehicle.
And in the, the egress or the entrances, you've already addressed. Two primary and one possible. I guess that's what you were saying.
Yes, they would use, Ames does not use this one that accesses the South Cross Convenience Center. So yes, it would be the existing driveway that's across, I think, from the Summit, Summit Shores and then Ames Avenue up here, that access.
Responding to one of the questions that you had up here about noise and you haven't heard anybody, I've attended only three of these things. There is never anybody that attends these things, in my humble opinion, from the neighborhoods. That's just an observation. There was problems with noise in the past. It's been addressed a couple of times. Deb probably is very aware of it. And they did something different to change the noise, modulate the noise in some manner. How many buses are going to be moving on a daily basis? 50, 100, 200, 300?
We'll let the applicant address that. That's part of, one of the conditions is a traffic study.
Well, that's kind of an important question, don't you think? I think it might be.
We have, our city attorney can address what we have at this point, but it needs to be confirmed through further, further study.
Because I, I previewed the document that was in front and it sounds like it's kind of a done deal with few exceptions. And, and there was very little input from the population, as I explained earlier. It's pretty typical that I've seen at these meetings. Not a lot of people show out from the general population, if you will. Why or how? That's a difference question, I understand. Will I be able to ask a question as this goes forward? If, once you get explanation from them? Or is this my only opportunity to talk, speak?
Sure, you can speak again, depending on how long it is.
I'll raise my hand and I'll be quiet about it. It's, okay. I guess those are my important questions, if you could address that. I thought this was farther along. I understand now that maybe there's, there's issues that still have to be addressed. My experience is they typically are much farther along than this, but, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners, I can address the, the vehicles that are parked in the Sears lot are not part of this application. They are, they are there from local dealerships. I believe Walzer, I'm not sure if Burnsville Toyota is. But we have a, an, a permit that you can get. It's a temporary permit to store those vehicles out at that site. So they do, they get a permit each year to be able to store those vehicles. But those are separate from what the applicant is discussing.
But it's reasonable to assume going forward that that could be part of the decision making on what I could see is 1,000 or better parking spaces. It's possible.
It's possible.
They may not want to address it, but I could certainly understand it's a possibility.
Yeah, it would be open for...
And they can contract with any one of these major dealerships out there.
Yes.
They would have to get, they would have to get a permit through the city from my understanding of what Deb is explaining.
But that would happen. I think that could possibly happen.
Anything is possible, sir.
Exactly, that's my point.
Chair members of the Commission, my name is Mike Richter. I am the owner of Transit Team. My wife Stacy and I purchased the company in 2012. We've actually been in, Transit Team has been around since the 1960s, so I'll give you some background. We, we are, after the award of this Metro Mobility South Zone contract, we will be the largest paratransit provider in the state of Minnesota. We will operate about 470 vehicles across our entire fleet. We have, this Burnsville location will be our third location if it moves forward. Headquarters is in Minneapolis. We have a facility in Maple Grove. We purchased that facility in 2016. We were awarded an agency contract, which grew our fleet by about 100 vehicles in 2018. As a part of that growth, we realized very quickly, we thought that Maple Grove facility, the first Maple Grove facility, was going to give us the growth that we needed for, I don't know, the next five or 10 years, but the addition of 100 vehicles quickly takes up space. So we actually were able to negotiate the purchase of the neighboring property. Through that transaction, we actually got into, we assumed some leases from some local car dealerships regarding that space. Those leases are ending in June of this year. We are going to be then developing that facility into more vehicle parking, so curbing, asphalt, water retention, lighting, et cetera. We're very familiar with this process. The intriguing part about this is, so about five years ago, the South Metro contract was a new Metro Mobility contract within the region. It was awarded to First Transit through a competitive bid. We, we did try to obtain that and unfortunately we, we lost. But it was on our, our kind of bucket list to add this contract. We've had our eye on it since, since it was established in 2015. We knew property was, was a big part of it. It's very difficult to find commercial industrial property in the Twin Cities. We've been active in the market for five plus years. We were able through our, our broker to create a relationship with Ames and, and realized very quickly that our businesses, while in different industries, do overlap quite a bit and it became very apparent that this would be a good fit for them looking to sell the property and for us looking to obtain a new, a new parcel for this, this contract. So in August, we began those discussions with Ames and we've been working through that process. We submitted our bid in January of this year and we're just awarded the South Metro contract late February and actually signed that contract today. So this is something that we're working towards for an August 1st start. That contract that we were awarded for the South Metro is an additional 109 vehicles through our other contracts, specifically our agency contract, which does service a number of DT and H facilities here in Dakota County such as Life Works and Pro Act in Eagan. We have a number of routes that have currently been deadheading from Minneapolis and in some cases Maple Grove, just because of the lack of space, to the southern locations. So we'll shift about 20 to 30 of those paratransit vehicles down to this facility as well. The hard part of this whole process is, I've said a couple of times now and, and been in a positive way wrong about our growth. So the, the space was the most intriguing part of this property and facility for us. And so I apologize for the fact that a lot of this says future storage. You know, the main kind of asphalted areas, the 12 and a quarter acre, acre area, we knew was going to be for Transit Team right now to start the contract August 1st, give us a little additional growth here over the next five years of that contract. But we want to be able to have that space available to us because it's so difficult to, to locate the space in, in other, in other cities. So the future storage and the, and the car dealerships, the auto dealership storage, that, that's just, those are ideas that we have to help kind of monetize and offset some of the significant costs, as you can imagine, for this, this large parcel. So our ideas are, well, we will entertain, you know, the auto portion of it. We, we don't know what else. There's other contracts out there that we'll be able to bid on. We haven't had the opportunity yet to, you know, with respect to Ames, this, we were trying to keep this deal quiet until we knew things were progressing further, until we were awarded the contract. So we haven't had an opportunity to market it yet for either lease or sale. So we don't really know kind of what, what else is out there. But we, what we do know is that Transit Team is a, is a really hardworking young organization. We have done amazing things with the city of Maple Grove. My wife Stacy and I are residents in Maple Grove. We have that second facility, second, second and third facility in, in Maple Grove. We actually turned a, a scrapyard. If you were familiar with the fires, the Northern Metal Fires up in Becker, you should have seen the facility that we purchased in Maple Grove before we cleaned it up and made it a transit facility. But that, ultimately, that could have been Maple Grove on the news with a fire that burned for a week. And they were happy that we came in and they were happy that we, that we did those things. And that's, that's how we operate. We do things the right way. You know, there, there is this outdoor storage. We're not trying to just, you know, put random things in there. We understand the code. We understand you can pull our CUP at any point for violating those codes, we get it. But what we don't want to do is, is, I should say, what we want to do is we're buying the Ames property as it is. What we don't want to do is go in, we're making a significant investment. It's very costly, very time consuming to have to, to decompact and plant over those gravel areas. And ultimately, we're going to end up having, likely to pave it in the near future, which means we're going to spend a lot of money, going to have a lot of... And Pat Mason was kind enough to put together some numbers on what that would cost and, and the impact that it would have as far as how many vehicles would be in and out taking that. But we don't want to have to do that work right away because it's costly and we know we're ultimately, hopefully, if things continue to go the way that they have been, going to be needing that space in, in the short term. So I appreciate your time. I'd be happy to answer any, any questions about our plan and our proposal.
Sure, I just have a quick question. Who are your contracts through? Are they through the Met Council or who do you get your contracts through?
Yeah, so we, we currently have two. So the West Zone is the largest of the Metro Mobility zones. We have, we've operated that since 1986. We added the agency contract through the Met Council. That's the entirety of the seven county metro area for specifically serving DT and H facilities, people going to day, day training and rehabilitation programs. And then this South Metro contract will be the third contract that, that the Council has signed with us.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, quick question. In regards to how the process works, if I work for you, I drive in to go get my bus?
Yeah.
Leave my car and I take my bus?
Correct, you'll go in, you'll park your personal car. You'll go into dispatch, check in, get your manifest.
Yeah, but I mean, from a parking standpoint, it's one for one type thing?
Correct.
With all the new stuff that's happening here, are these people who are currently working for you now or is this new employment that's going to happen throughout the phase of how many times this is going, you know, your growth rate?
Great question. So currently we've identified we're about 36 drivers overstaffed, which is a miracle in this employment market. But 36 drivers that we have already committed to this contract that live in the South Metro, that are currently operating either out of our Maple Grove or Minneapolis facility, the rest will be job hires, job growth over the next five months.
Yeah, okay, that, that, that sounds good, thank you.
Commissioner John.
Just to piggyback on Commissioner Roberts' question, how many jobs do you expect to bring into the city with the, congratulations, excuse me, congratulations on the growth, by the way?
Thank you very much, yeah, it's really exciting. And I, the, the real estate is a, a fun little aspect to that business and the growth as well. So thanks for allowing me to be here. Yeah, the first year... So thanks for allowing me to be here. Yeah, the first year, we're going to be, you know, we need 135 total drivers on the contract in year one to start. And then there's office staff of about 16 reservationists. We'll have about five dispatch staff. We'll have four to five technicians, a building maintenance, individual, a janitor. So, you know, 150 in year one. And then the service itself grows anywhere from eight to 10% a year. So we'll continue hiring throughout the course of the contract. And then again, you know, we're constantly bidding on other work and other contracts. And we know there's one for bid right now here in Dakota and Washington, Washington and Southeast Ramsey. That's another 30 vehicles. And potentially would be another 50 jobs.
That's great. Can I ask another one inside the floor? So you talked about not wanting to till up the area and this is where you plan to put the car storage, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that because right now that is the plan going forward? You don't foresee any changes in that plan?
Yeah, I mean, that's the path least resistance for us, just because it's in, you know, it's a part of the approved ordinances. And it's something we know really well right now. The dealerships, especially with some of the economic stuff that's going on right now, that we might see a lot of extra cars waiting to be sold. And so it's just a really easy way to help monetize some of that extra space as we wait for the growth.
And how soon do you think that would happen?
I mean.
I know it's early.
I love the longest one, but we have work to do if that's the case. We haven't started having those conversations yet. We wanted to make sure we got the signed contract and then it was to proceed, which came today from the Met Council. We want to see how this process goes with the city as well. Because we do still have ultimately some contingencies where we could back out of this with Ames and we don't want to do that. But we have to make sure that this deal makes sense for us from a business standpoint, from an investment standpoint. So we'd love tenants right away, but there's work. We got to find them and then we have to, we have to bring it up to code. We got to, we have to put asphalt down, so that's going to take some time.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts.
Just to answer a question for our neighbor, Mr. Petrie. Item 16 on here is going to require you to have a traffic study done. I mean, obviously, these are some, you've got people coming in and you've got people going out. Ames, of course, had traffic all the time as well. It sounds like it was even more at times. But you're fine with that and that's something that, obviously, when that's done, that's going to give us a bigger picture of what's going to happen.
Right, yeah. It's something today, we were a little caught off guard just because it came on Friday afternoon. It was the first that we heard of it. But today, through the conversations with Deb and the engineers, we understand something that needs to be done. We ultimately think that the Ames uses, there's probably more there when we start looking at all the numbers and all the equipment. And I know Pat is working on obtaining all of that, so we're hoping it's really a wash, if anything.
This is more of a answer to your question, sir, in regards to, we are going to have a study done on that and that's something that's going to be looked at with a fine.
You can speak to that.
Would that be on a follow-up meeting then?
What we're doing here as a planning commission is looking at this first time proposal. And as we pick through it, we can send it on to the city council. If it gets approved with these items saying you have to do this first, it's a checklist that he has to take care of before this gets into August 1st or anything like that. So this is kind of like the first step on this and that's why we kind of pick and choose where we are on this. Some information just showed up yesterday or Friday, things like that.
There it is.
So, yeah, I mean, it's good that it starts here. It has to start somewhere. And that's why we're going to be kind of more specific on certain things. Some things are pretty lighthearted, so it's easy to say, okay, that's okay. But things like a traffic study is something we look at because this is a neighboring community. And that's my question about the noise that I had. Because one of the things we have in the past is noise problems and that's something that we look at. So with this, when you talk about noise, you're talking about dead cars, you know, that aren't even moving at one point. So it's going to be really quiet. Now, the bus is coming in and out at certain times compared to Ames, you know, with the construction stuff.
And the way, and the way the property will ultimately flow is it'll be a circular.
Yeah, no offense to Ames, but I, from a construction background, I know when metal hits metal, it's pretty darn noisy, so.
You know, if we have a Metro Mobility vehicle, you know, coming back, you know, one of our closers coming back at, say, 11 o'clock. Or even midnight because there was a later trip, you know, it's a circular flow. They're going to pull up to a fuel pump. They're going to pull into a parking space. You're not even going to hear the reverse beeper on it. And we can create that flow around that fact as well. One comment about the traffic study as well is it's based on the 268 total vehicles, which is our assumed growth in, say, five or 10 years. And starting time zero, we're at 130. So we're probably, you know, when we factor that in right now, we're lower than where Ames is currently. And it's the future growth that kind of triggered the traffic study. In this case, at least, that was our understanding.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Watt.
I just wanted to say welcome to Burnsville and thank you for moving your business here. That's pretty awesome. And as Deb mentioned, Ms. Grass mentioned that this is, seems like a perfect fit for your business. And I just think, you know, Ames facility, it's industrial property and this is a much lighter use for an industrial property, which I think is important, especially considering it's surrounded by, pretty much mostly surrounded by housing. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or anything? Anybody else from the audience wishing to speak?
If I could.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Pat Mason with Ames Construction. First and foremost, I want to appreciate, I appreciate your time and consideration and Mr. Richter's request tonight. To answer the first question, we're excited to stay in Burnsville as well, so thank you for asking that question. Like Deb had mentioned, we are in the process of planning on getting our people over, you know, to our Ames corporate that will be in Burnsville off of Judicial 142. So she's 100% correct. As far as the heavy industrial storage, we found growing it. We need more room. So we're moving east. We are working in Empire Township to get that finalized and so forth. And so we will be severed, but it will be a good thing for our growth and our storage needs here in the future for years to come. I just want to add a few things on the Patricia Park point about decompacting and revegetating and so forth. I ran some preliminary numbers on that here today. And for Mike to have to do that, to remove the, about a foot of Class 5, get rid of that at a site, bring in another six inches of black dirt, decompact it, do everything you need to do, just to get it decompacted, could be $300,000. And I say could because it's all about the haul and the distance on the haul and so forth, and that's kind of up in there until you get things finalized. Now, talk about coming back in. Now, you're going to be bringing back in Class 5. You have to bring in, you have to strip the black dirt. You have to respread that black dirt. You have to recompact the site so that, you know, you can be drivable and so forth and meet the requirements. And without even paving, that's over $500,000. So it's an $800,000 deal. A few other things to point out there. We have a private gate there that's automated that Mike can lock himself. He realizes until he paves it, you can't store anything out there. So that was one strong, one hole he can put in place. Moreover, it's a violation of his permit if they would use it. And there's going to be no funny business going on, nor do I think you guys would feel that way as well. Thirdly, there's a stormwater pond on the north end of that site and that whole 10 acre site drains north to that pond and everything's pre-treated there. And then goes under the road judicial to the smaller pond over by Collins. And from there it goes, I'm not certain. But what I can tell you is, I believe that was probably one of the concerns is, you know, Ames doesn't know if they're going to put a building on this site. You know, they're using this storage. We know they're starting to outgrow their site. So if there's a long period in between and so forth, for, you know, they're going to stay here and maybe decommission that site. They can't just leave it in a gravel yard because people might assume they can use it that way. I think that's where it was going and also the stormwater management. And those things are both in place. So I guess with that, that's all I really wanted to add from the things I picked up on. Again, I appreciate your time tonight. We're excited and thrilled that we get to stay in Burnsville and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I just want to say thank you for everything you do in Burnsville and with our community. I'm not going to get into my thoughts on the project at the moment because we'll do that after the public hearing. But again, I think you guys have done a lot of work. You understand your business. Transit Team, I mean, it really, it's a necessary service that you provide and I think it's great that you're coming to Burnsville. So that wasn't a question, just a comment.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak from the audience? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing at 7:44. Commissioners, any comments? What are your thoughts? Commissioner Roberts.
Well, I'm not going to make a motion yet just because I think if you guys want to talk, I don't want to jump into that. I just want to give my thank you, Deb. I was just going to ask you to put that back up. In regards to the items that we have here, I'm a big fan of taking out number five completely. I truly believe, we've done that with other companies where they go different out because it makes sense. And I got no problem with that because right now, it's not like we're going, there's nothing going to happen to that area anyway. It's just going to sit there. So that's a wasted cost. In number seven, Deb?
Yep.
The northern outdoor storage shall be permitted on the property. To take that out doesn't really do too much, does it? I mean, they still have to get permits for everything that they want to do in the future for cars and everything. So it's not like we're open at the floodgates for stuff. We're just making it easier. Okay.
Correct. Yep. The only reason that we had put that in there is because we were looking at, you know, the possibility of four different scenarios with that Patricia Park site. But if we look at it as the same uses that they're proposing, then there's no need to have that.
So let me ask you this question from staff. The stuff that's red marked and, was it number 17, the new one?
Yep.
Okay. That's all staff in favor?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to know.
Commissioner John.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Roberts on especially number five. Where it doesn't make any sense to go through and till all that up. It's one of those things that would be a good reason to put a waiver on. And, yeah, it sounds like a great, a great place to, or a great company to come in and fill an open vacancy that Ames will be leaving for us. It's, I think it's a win-win all around for that, even the neighborhood. I hope you agree, Mr. Petrie, it would be a win for you guys as well.
Pardon me?
I'm hoping you agree as well. It would be a win for you guys as well.
This is my first look at this thing, so I guess I was really concerned about the traffic. That was kind of the big thing. And how that would interfere, interfere if any.
And that will be answered, yeah.
How many vehicles are going at once? Do you have 50 or 100 of these things warming up in the morning typically? No.
No, they're all gas.
They're all gas. That answers that question, yeah.
I'm sure they'll be electric someday.
Oh, no.
Eventually.
Commissioner Roberts.
Till Tesla makes a bus. Is there anybody else that was wanting to say something before I approach this? Okay, I'd like to make a motion. And I hope I do this right. The planning commission recommends to the city council approval of the rezoning conditional use permit for bus and all dealership, new vehicle inventory, preliminary and final plat of Transit Team addition, subject to the following 17 conditions. And then can I just list what we want to change?
Yep.
I can't just say what you guys did? Okay. Condition number one, to have the red lined portion taken out. Condition number five, to be totally removed. Condition number six, to have the red line portion taken out. And condition number seven, be totally removed with the addition of number 17, however you want to word that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And this item would go to the city council next week on Tuesday night. Their meeting starts at 5:30 in this room.
Thank you.
And Mr. Petrie, if you want to call and we know this is going to be filled up sometime, we can let you know. This place has been packed before.
Yes.
And really, thank you for coming because you bring a great point. We do want people here. We do want our neighbors here.
Few people have been here before. As I said, very few people show up. It may not be in their best interest necessarily, and I understand that part.
That's the reason I asked Deb if we had any more responses, because a lot of times we'll get it in our profile before we get this. We get this last week to look at it before tonight. And we always look for, especially at our level for the planning commission, we're the neighborhood level. So we want to know what our neighbors are thinking and doing. So to have you come in here is.
Perfectly blunt, I want to look for 1440, 1420 as an address. It's within the confines of Ames.
Yes.
The address.
Yes.
This is a little bit more than I realized.
Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to item five, and that is to consider an application from Northland Real Estate Group LLC for a variance from the subdivision ordinance drainage and utility easement standards at 15309 Maple Island Road presented by Dan.
And Chair, before we get going, I'm going to recuse myself on this particular item and I'm going to step out for the evening, so I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Great. Thank you too.
It's my church.
This application, this Northland Real Estate project is something that has been viewed many, many times at different levels of the project. The last time it was reviewed, the city council approved the project several, subject to several conditions on January 21st. And one of those conditions was to have the applicant apply for this variance to remove the drainage and utility easements, some specific ones. The subject site is the church property owned by Grace United Methodist Church in this location. And the development, the development would be actually looking to the south and they're looking at doing a 100 unit apartment building. And the reason that I wanted to show this, this is actually kind of their tree preservation plan. But what I wanted to show you is the steep, you know, contours on the east part of the property. And then also this area here, I'm sorry, this area is in the report referred to as the 30-foot public right of way and drainage and utility easement. So what happens now is you have this entire site basically going downhill and it gets routed. The water runs basically downhill and then down to there's a pond south of the property. Their property line ends here. The pond is further to the south and includes, I believe, some MINDOT drainage goes to that. And then also this site and other public drainage from Maple Island Road. So what the applicant has proposed to do, and this is what was approved by the city council, is this is their front property line, the west front property line. And they are proposing to use the existing driveway. They're going to make improvements to that existing driveway to put in curb so that we'll actually be able to control stormwater runoff where it does not now. Then they will be installing a new parking lot. And then this will be the new driveway to enter the building parking underground. And this is another entrance. Right here is where the retaining walls are within the 10-foot platted drainage and utility easement. And what I mean by that is when properties are platted, the subdivision ordinance has designed standards for lots. And it's getting at all those things that are needed, you know, for lots to be able to work. The general standard is that you have drainage and utility easements that go around the perimeter of the property. Usually they're wider at the front side where the street is. In this case, for Burnsville, it's 10 feet. And then at the side lot lines on either side of a side property line, they're five feet. And then they can be five feet in the back. It just depends. They can also be much larger. And the subdivision ordinance allows the city engineer to work with the applicant and have them plat a larger drainage and utility easement. Like if there is part of a pond or the lake, you know, is on the property. The ordinance allows us to go bigger. It doesn't allow us to go smaller than the standard. So the only way that we can work with that then is to go through this variance process. In terms of the applicant, they actually did submit their final plat when it was reviewed by council, providing all of the easements per the subdivision ordinance. What happened though, as I indicated, and we discussed this here at the planning commission and council level, is that there would be an encroachment of this retaining wall. is that, uh, there would be an encroachment of this retaining wall, uh, and the the driveway within that first 10 feet. And the city engineer, um, would prefer not to have, uh, encroachments in those easements because the purpose of the easement is to allow utilities to go in there and drainage to occur. And if you have a big, huge retaining wall, um, chances are you're going to have an issue with that at some point or other. Uh, the other thing is, yes, we can do encroachment agreements, but the more and more and more you get of numbers of encroachment agreements, you know, administering that over an entire city, you know, gets to be complicated. So if possible, we'd prefer, or the city engineer would prefer not to do that. The applicant had, um, advised that they could relocate everything, that they thought they would be able to move everything to the east. However, from a staff perspective, um, because of the steep slopes, um, this is the actual the building here. You know, and then here's the parking lot, so they could move it over, but then you would have more impact from the building on the steep slopes and everything moving closer to the park and ultimately closer to the lake. So instead of having them do that, um, the recommendation to the council, and what they ended up approving and planning commission forwarded this as well, is to come in and just vacate or not have them plat that 10-foot drainage and utility easement along that property line. The other common, um, property line is between the two lots. And so we have lot one here, which is the church property, and then lot two is going to be the apartment property. So along this common lot line, that is already covered by a joint easement for maintenance, for utilities, for drainage, et cetera, because both uses are going to need that basically in perpetuity for their sites to operate. So from, um, the engineer's standpoint, really not a need to include this. The existing drainage, as we discussed, you know, it's been going out here, uh, to the street within this 30-foot area forever. Um, there's even going to be less water going out there because you have, um, this, uh, they're going to be installing these underground treatment systems. So really, the amount of, instead of having this entire side here draining out, you have this area that will continue to drain there. There is some area on the parking lot that will drain actually out to the street where it's supposed to, and it'll be held in by curb. Uh, and then, um, there, basically, everything to the south will continue to have the same. Um, so it's much less in terms of the approved grading drainage and utility, um, uh, plans for the project. So what staff, uh, had recommended then is that, um, the front drainage and utility easements be vacated, so that's what they have provided in their application. And then also this side one be vacated, and that's really why we're here today, is to consider that vacation. And with that, it's not a public hearing for variances, um, it's just a hearing, and we notify, um, abutting and adjacent property owners. Um, and it's, again, um, the only way to allow this to occur is the variance process, so that's why we're here.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Roberts?
So just in a nutshell, um, you guys are recommending that, um, remember we had like 30-somethings on that list, okay?
Yep.
Um, you're recommending that, I mean, it just makes sense to have this happen. And then I noticed in your wording that all the PUDs and CUPs and variances are all going to remain in effect that we have in there. This is just something that because of the way it is, this makes sense.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I needed, I just.
Yep, exactly.
You know the way I word stuff.
You got it, that's exactly it.
Well, we're not all plot and and easement experts, we've been doing this for a while, but it's just.
But it's so much fun.
Commissioner John?
What is our biggest fear here? Is there a fear at all with, um, making this change as far as engineering is concerned?
There's not. Um, when you plat, generally, um, one of the reasons you want to have these standard easements in there is because usually you're plating property and you've got stuff, you know, on the adjacent parcels. In this case, none of these parcels have drainage, platted drainage and utility easements. So there isn't a need to have something be a continuation here. And also because we already have this 30 feet in here of public right-of-way, usually you would have the 10 feet plus another 15 feet, um, of right of, of total. Um, here, we already have 30 feet, so there's not an issue, um, in not plating this at this location. And again, with the common lot lines, that's that's also very common because they will have to record their, um, uh, their easements and their maintenance agreements, everything will be recorded at the county. So really not a need to have these, um, in at this point. And the, um, from the ordinance standpoint, there is a variance process to get rid of it. Um, usually for the subdivision ordinance, when you're dealing with a community that's developing, like maybe a Lakeville, or they've got a lot of vacant, you know, land, and they're coming in with these plats with hundreds of lots and whatnot, you want to have uniformity in where those easements and things are. Burnsville, we're already fully developed, and, you know, this is an infill piece of property. And we have, the area is already accommodating more drainage than what will occur when the project is developed because of those underground, uh, systems and things that they're doing.
What are the underground systems? Are they re-treating?
They're treatment systems. Um, so the, um, the stormwater from the entire parking lot and from the building will be directed, uh, to the, these underground, uh, storage facilities, and then it's treated. And then it is, um, um, I don't know how best to say it. Sarah, please!
So it captures the water, um, it can contain a certain volume of water, some of that water is intended to infiltrate into the ground. Uh, and larger storm events, uh, it will continue to flow through, I believe there are three chambers, so it's got great opportunity to infiltrate, and then ultimately, um, during the larger rain events, uh, it will make its way out to the outlet that will flow overland eventually into that pond that Ms. Garros was mentioning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they had a buffer of like, if we had a three-inch rainstorm, it would take care of all that extra rain, and it wouldn't turn into a big flood zone. I mean, it just, it would store all that extra rain.
Well, that's nice.
It's really, it's really an underground pond, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay.
But clean.
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Commissioner Anderson?
I I just wanted to know from from my understanding, so there's the the 10-foot easement, and then normally what you would want is another 10 feet before any kind of property development, is that what you're saying?
Um, no, um, normally you have like this 10-foot on all front yards for drainage and utilities. And that includes, it's more than just, um, city, you know, utilities, that's for people being able to put in your front cable and phone and and those kinds of things. Then the standard, when you have a standard with road, um, public road, usually there's about 15 feet of right-of-way in here. Or people call it boulevard, you know, that stuff that we have to mow and maintain, even though it's not really ours, that kind of thing. So in this case, um, what I'm saying is that really we have a much bigger right-of-way here because of the freeway. So instead of having, you know, a 15-foot distance between where the property line is and where the road is here, we've got 30 feet.
Okay.
So you don't really need to have this 10 feet also.
Okay.
Because everything will be treated and move along in through this area unless it's treated by those underground systems, and then that flows out into this pond to the south.
And you guys were saying you weren't worried at all about the idea of the retaining wall maybe degrading over time with the, if any water does flow by there with in that easement area?
No, because of the way that the water, um, is designed to flow, it would not be, um, directed towards that retaining wall.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioners, any other questions? Is there a motion? Go ahead. Sorry, Commissioner Watt?
I got there first. So I moved that the, uh, planning, you know, that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the variance to eliminate the 10-foot west front yard drainage and utility easement and the 5-foot common side yard drainage and utility easements subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the conditions of the previously approved planned unit development conditional use permit, and variance shall remain in for full force and effect.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda are updates. Commissioners, any updates? Okay, wait for Deb to get back.
We just have, uh, the agenda, uh, for your next meeting to hand out. And we do have, um, actually a lot of applications that have come in, um, so the meetings are going to start to be much more full. Um, and some of them are going to be pretty big projects as we work on. Um, the environmental review for the, um, Center Village. Also, the environmental review for Kramer Mining and Materials, the quarry, uh, that should be, um, ended here shortly. Uh, go to the council in April.
Yes.
Um, the comments that came back, uh, there weren't many, and, uh, there really is not a need for further study or to have them go through an environmental impact statement. So once, if the council adopts that, they call it a negative declaration, meaning that they don't need more study, then they'll be in for their PUD amendment to actually do the project on that mining. So lots of stuff.
Yes.
And hopefully we'll get that TOD ordinance to you sooner, sooner than later, looking on it. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.